7:02, can't get ahold of Maria. Mr. Miller is not here, Jay. Bob Cushion's here. Kim Willie is. And myself. Howard Drunk.
Zoning Administrator Chris Brimmer.
And Hannah DeMyers.
Zoning! What's up?
Not a whole lot. Letters have gone out to a couple of short-term rentals that haven't come in yet. We've got some cleanup down there on Old County Road South. Apparently, Mr. Holloway is taking it to heart that he needs to start moving his stuff in a conforming location. But I know he's in and out. He's here maybe a couple of weekends a month. He's working out of state. So apparently, when he gets here, this is how he's spending his time. Other than that, some cleanup there on Madbrook Road. A letter went out to Lyons. We'll see, you know, with him, it's cutting the grass, you know, every six months or so. He gets a, hey, warning letter. It's getting kinda cluttered out there. Of course, the problem is the line between stuff and junk is a very narrow one.
So like
And he walks that line really
Because I kept seeing pictures of his place because he was affected by the flood and stuff, but... So like, can... you're living on, how many like unregistered vehicles do you have?
Three.
Three.
How many's he got?
Uh, he's got four of them down there, but he's playing the tag game. You know, the plate gets moved around back and forth. You know, and he's definitely a hobbyist. I keep trying to tell him, put a stockade fence up and then it's not visible from a neighboring property or from the roadway. You know, that's all you have to do to be compliant, which is the game Whipple plays all the time. You know, they put their stuff behind stuff. Which is what keeps them compliant, but still junky.
So, we've got three campers up to Ricky's.
Ricky's.
Hours.
Uh, okay.
Right by Holloway.
Yeah, two of them are tagged.
That's what they've been lived in, right?
Yeah, that's... that is a hard call to establish. I mean, it really is.
No, I don't disagree with you.
Yeah. The other thing is, we have a tiny house and we have an issue with a property owner that I may well have to have a sheriff's deputy to go investigate.
Stuffing.
Yeah, he's just hostile is the best way to describe it.
Yep, the letter that, um, Old County Road down by the boat launch.
Yeah.
He was very hostile to us.
Oh, that one on the left?
There's two on the left.
There's an old camp and then there's...
No, the old camp is gone.
Okay, so that's where the
Yeah, there's a tiny house and a camper. You know, there's a tiny house and a, I think a fifth wheel. You know, and, uh, yeah, I think I may have to... Number one, I need to catch him on site because we don't have good contact information. And then when I do catch him on site, I think I'm gonna wind up picking up the phone and having a county sheriff's deputy meet me over there.
Now, you
You know, you guys don't pay me enough to get shot at.
So, he doesn't have a driveway permit, or does?
He does.
He does, okay.
And he does have a permit for an accessory structure. He doesn't have a permit for the tiny house.
But he doesn't have
But he doesn't, he doesn't think he needs a permit for the tiny house.
Well, he's got two
That's
Two tiny houses, if we call the camper one.
Yeah, 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 yeah. No, I mean, the problem is, there's this myth that's really propagated by the people who sell these things, that, oh, you don't need permits, you don't need this, you don't need that. Yeah, it's on wheels.
On wheels and it's registered. But if it sits in one place, in the Lister's case, if it sits there for six months and a day, it's gonna be taxed as a resident.
But on the flip side, the zoning bylaw says you can occupy an RV on a site for 28 days a year. So, you know, is it an RV or is it a structure? And what they try to do is, they try to have it both ways. You know, well, it's a structure when I think it should be a structure, but it's an RV when I want it to be an RV.
And we consider, if that's all you go on the block, it's a camp, and that's what you're using it as,
Yeah.
and it's not being moved, it's fixed, so...
So it's taxed differently than it's regulated under zoning?
Correct, and everybody seems to get confused when that happens.
You know, and like I said, it doesn't help when the people who sell these things are telling them, oh, you don't need permits for this.
Saying if it's on wheels, it goes, but...
Um, it's the same issue with shipping containers. The big outfit down in White River Junction that sells these things tell people, oh, you don't need a permit for that. Well, it's a structure. You do need a permit for that.
So if you use it as like a garage type of thing, then you would need a permit for...
Well, a storage container, period. If you have one dropped on your site, it's not on wheels and it doesn't have a trailer plate on it.
Yep.
It's a structure, as far as we're concerned.
Pre-made. And we tax them as such.
You know, in fact, the same guy down there that, at Down in White River, who sells the storage containers, he also sells, you know, these like eight by 12 sheds that come on a flatbed, and he's been telling people buying those that you don't need a permit. Oh, well, you're not building anything. Uh, now, I had conversation with him and several of his salespeople who basically told me to pound sand there, but I can't tell them how they sell their stuff. And in fact, it's a gap in the law. They can, in fact, tell people whatever they damn well please and put them in violation because the property owner owns the violation. So now I'm tagging property owners who've been told they don't need permits with a notice of violation because you need a permit. Now, most people go, oh crap, you know, and they come out, you know, here you go. And some people are stubborn about it. I was told I don't need a permit.
I could tell you all sorts of stuff, but doesn't mean it's true.
Exactly. And then you, you get that limited number of people who thought that if they didn't need a permit, they didn't need to meet setback requirements and, and now they're stuck and they gotta move the thing. It's like, well, yeah, you can get a remedial permit, but you're gonna need to move it 20 feet that way.
Okay, so did we get anything from NVDA?
I haven't seen anything yet.
From our meeting?
Well, he's done stack, writing stuff.
Yeah.
And we're gonna take a look at it as he's doing it.
Um, I can tell you that NVDA is neck-deep right now in flood relief.
Sure.
Although there hasn't been an official disaster declaration yet. Um, but what this does bring up is the importance of you guys adopting that new model bylaw by August of 2026.
Well, it's gonna be part of the
Yeah, if you adopt the river corridor, part of it as well, the town's only on the hook for seven and a half percent of the cost of flood recovery.
Well, that's gonna be done with the town plan. That stuff to be added on to the zoning bylaw.
Well, it's a The way we've structured it, it's relatively easy. We just strike the old and insert the new. I mean, we don't play games with the model bylaw. You just plain don't have enough floodplain stuff here to worry about, you know?
Down there on, um, the river road. I wonder how bad that trussel took it this time.
It did not go that way at all.
On River Road?
Huh?
On River Road?
Yep. You can see it when the leaves are gone down past Sumpsick, well, just before you come into Sumpsick on the left, that trussel. The river has eroded and it actually comes back around.
Yeah.
I was fully expecting the water to be running down the train tracks Thursday morning, but it weren't.
Do you know if, did Linden repeal their flood hazard regulation, like that guy wanted them to?
I don't think they did.
Yeah, because you lose your community insurance, you know, flood insurance rating and all of that damage on Main Street. It's all on you.
So that, that came down from the sewer plant?
What on, uh, the flooding on Main Street? Nah, I think it was just because Sumpsick River came up. I mean, it was, it was flooding all the way from the Gas and Go all the way
Yeah, because you could see where that Nick gas plant sat was coming through.
Yeah, Nick's Gas and Go.
Nick's Gas and Go and the water was, because the river's right there, it's coming down through. But we, daycare and stuff, we've never had it come up that high. It went up into the upper building. Came through the old parking lot, halfway up Stetson Drive and into our basement.
Really?
Yep, and it, wow, it didn't happen, so like at seven in the morning, the water was just barely coming across the road, but by 10, it was... But we'd already closed on Thursday because half our staff couldn't make it in because they were already washed out, but, but yeah, the water was way up into that building in the back.
Um, the other little bit of weirdness, um, they amended the part of Title 24 that exempted, well, exempted, that carved out rural towns could elect to go to Australian ballot. Well, now that is gone. I mean, the select board can decide to put things like town plans and zoning bylaw amendments and that sort of thing on an Australian ballot, but it's no longer the default. So literally, it's, the minimum is two hearings and the select board can adopt and 30 days later, it's effective.
But you still have to go before the
Doesn't have to.
Okay.
Now, they can choose to continue to put it on the ballot.
Well, it wasn't Australian.
What they've, what they've done is
What I, what I consider Australian, they always done it during town meeting.
Right.
And had a vote during town meeting, which I guess would be an Australian ballot, but...
Yeah, but they can, they can elect to put it on a referendum vote. But the state has eliminated the requirement for them to do so. Um, the problem is, uh, because they've done this, they feel like they've handed towns a silver bullet. Here you go. You can adopt changes anytime you want. Here, here, we gave you this tool. They think it's a tool. In reality, what they did was, they pitched a political hand grenade in the laps of select boards because this isn't the only town. Fairly is the same way. They do the adoptives and interim and then
Right.
public education and do, you know, um, it's not so much a factor up here, but down there, I've got six, seven million dollars worth of grants and that kind of stuff working. And ACCD is like, oh, well, amend your bylaw. What do you, what do you mean? You're gonna, it's gonna take you 18 months to amend your bylaw? We, we, we gave you this great tool. 60 days, right?
That's rather That makes sense.
Um, I have been talking to Jacob at ACCD about, well, if select board adopts as an interim, is that good enough? He hasn't gotten back to me yet.
Yeah, well, like everything else, they haven't thought the whole thing through. You know, Thursday, because we had so much rain, we're, we're considered a wastewater. So we couldn't spray on fields.
Oh, right, right.
They had to go in pits. Couldn't just say, oh, we're not gonna spray today, get rid of it. We had to. So, 9:30, they closed the bridge in East Hurwitz, which shut off one of the bigger pits that we had available to us up in Glover. So we had to find an alternate route up through the Willywax and whatnot, but it all takes time doing all this stuff. So we had pits that were available to us as far as we could get to. So we called the state and said, well, they're at their capacity for the year until it resets in October. Can we use them? Nope, nope, can't do that.
Yeah.
Not like we're sending it down the river. It's just going in a pit to be held for the time being because of the road. Nope, nope, couldn't do that. Halls was another one that we couldn't get to.
Sometimes you just don't ask hours.
Oh, no. Oh, everybody was all, all the old timers were saying, oh, the state's gonna be crawling right up our backs, I'd find it out. Oh, yeah, you went here, you went here. They're gonna check up on now that stuff and triple check. Oh, yeah, nope.
No, I get it.
But it's okay for Burlington to dump all the raw sewage into the Lake Champlain or St. John'sbury to send it down Sumpsick River. That's okay. Don't worry about that.
You won't be seeing me fishing there.
Okay.
That's all right. Their, their stormwater dilutes it anyway. Are they, they're still working on separating the two systems, aren't they?
I think they're done.
They're done? They actually, wow.
But they seem to forget certain places where they started and left off. Still, there's an old section in between two new sections. Well, that's what happened down in St. J. Hurwitz, where the distillery. There was a 10-foot section of old, hundred and some odd year-old pipe in between. How hard is it to figure out that, okay, this is all new, this is all new, but, you know, we only went, they don't touch?
Well, you know, they
Oh, I know what it is.
Yeah, well, instead of just block divert, which is all they really needed to do, they decided to install an entire new stormwater system. But they didn't block and divert on the old wastewater system. So you've still got wastewater moving back and forth into the stormwater system in those places like you're talking about. And, uh, yeah, EPA doesn't like that. St. John'sbury's kind of run out of its, uh, you know, exemptions and, you know, grandfathers and all that other stuff. It's waivers. So if they're dumping wastewater directly into the Sumpsick because they're over capacity at the plant, they got no excuse anymore.
Yeah, well.
You know, that's what the whole separation thing was supposed to be, so that you weren't treating, you know, stormwater in the wastewater plant.
Well, it makes sense.
That's a very, it was very standard all the way up through, God, the early 90s, to just have it all go in the same
Well, they probably figured it would flush out every so often any clog that we're building up, right down through. I'm sure the old plumbers figured it that way.
Did more than that now.
All right, so again, we can't do our April stuff or March stuff and read
Have you heard from Jenny?
I don't, I haven't heard a word other than he couldn't make the last meeting and I didn't
I'm assuming he must have had a Isn't he on the school board?
Yeah.
Yeah, the school board, he had, he's also the
He said he had another meeting a month ago. Last, last meeting.
The last meeting, supervisory too, I think he's on.
I bet he's on.
I think he's on both, but I thought I read that. But, you know, I don't really know.
So He may need to step down from this. I have a feeling this, this is gonna tie him up big time.
I mean, it used to be the school board stuff wasn't anything too major, but I don't know.
Tell them what you make of him.
Yeah, of course. He's superintendent, I think. I don't know, I guess, I heard somebody. The superintendent, because Mark Tucker retired.
Did he really?
Yeah. Yeah. He's the only person I ever remember going to the interview and he said five years, but I think he went seven, or he'd been longer, but he's not, I don't know. Staying long, too long.
So you're recruiting again?
So I got last night, saw they were, but they should have by now because he was done like June, whenever the school year, June, June 30th. That's a big district because you've got Cabot and Twinfield, Danville, Peachum, and then Walden, Vernon House. So, I don't know.
All right, so what we just, we have to work on, what do we have to work on?
So, yeah, I was gonna say, is he sending, sure, are we supposed to be going through this like cherry picking out stuff?
I thought he was gonna send this stuff and we were gonna review it.
Well, unless I saw.
So if he does, we can review that.
Well, you generally haven't sent nothing.
Well, not yet, but I mean, but the point is, we went through it and it's, he's got the ideas all of that. You know, I mean, it's not like there's anything new here.
No, not really.
No, he was pretty good about like
It's not like he's insane to add stuff.
No, most everything is like simplified.
No, he's flipping it.
That's right, that's right.
Which
I agree with you.
I agree too. Because nobody's gonna say
It makes this thing more user-friendly.
Yes.
Right, well, the whole, this index, they're great.
Yeah, this here was like
If you just update this every, this is huge.
Because this is what people will look at and question.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Right.
They're gonna read these cute little blocks and be like, oh, that's easy to understand.
Exactly. So I think that's what, we're waiting for him to forward information, right? Sure, when he comes up with it.
Then he's gonna set up another time coming back, I think, with his schedule.
Yeah, so I don't know, is there any So I guess we could um, that flood resilience stuff. Who gave us that, right?
Yeah, you should have that.
Is that to add to it?
Not, well, not to the councilman, it's gotta go to the zoning.
Zoning bylaw.
We have to have a hearing on it.
Was that, you sent us an email or was that a paper?
Essentially, it sounds like it's just an update to
Email, yeah.
Yeah, it's a It's an update to, and they've added what are called River Corridor regulations that aren't that different than, you know, but it's all the same process. It's conditional use hearings if you're in the floodway. It's that sort of thing. And, uh, and what you guys have done is what I always advise towns to do, just adopt the model bylaw. And that way, there's no daylight between you and FEMA.
We're taking out the old and installing the new.
And installing the new.
Yep. And this was written by the Montelier or
Yeah, this is, uh, between FEMA and then River Corridor people in the state.
Yep.
So maybe we want to post that for public hearing next meeting, Howard?
Well, that's where I'm wondering. Do we want to do this? Article four flood hazard regulations, 401, that
Although what I recommend highly you guys do is sit on this until we have the preliminary maps. Because they're digitizing all of this for the first time. We're actually gonna have digital mapping and we'll be getting copies to correct not necessarily where the floodway is, but things like road names and structure locations and that sort of thing. I'm hoping we're gonna have it next month.
Okay.
I got my eye out for it. Um, I was promised by August. And then they're gonna start the clock on adoption by August of 2026.
So then we could set something for September.
Yep. And we ought to have a preliminary map for you guys to display. You know, at the, which is really why I want you to put it off until you got, got a map in hand.
So we could put it on next month's agenda to see if we have the maps.
To review it.
Yeah.
To review the maps and then that would give us to the following month to
And then we can warn the hearing and
Yeah, if we have that, but, yep.
Um, you know, and then we can throw it in the lap of select board and tell them, hey, remember those floods in July?
I mean, we lucked out last year, nothing, but this time. That was crazy.
Okay, so the whole road frontage and 50-foot easement or right-of-way.
If you want to clean that language up, you can go right ahead.
So it's 302 is frontage on or access to public roads or waters. No land development may be permitted on lots which do not either have frontage on public roads or private waters with the approval of the DRB access to such road or waters by permanent easement or right-of-way of at least 50 feet in width. What is the issue with that? It's easement or a right-of-way?
Or a right-of-way, yeah.
Of 50 feet minimum. So where's the confusion?
I, I don't think there is confusion. What they did was, they allowed a panhandle that is 50 feet wide to be created to the lot.
Which is frontage, which is road frontage, which
Then you need, then you need to clarify your definition.
Okay, tell me which needs to be clarified. Frontage and easement or right-of-way is two different things which are not synonymous.
What you do is, you add a clause essentially, um, prohibiting panhandles.
Well, this does. Lot frontage, and it's 200 feet minimum.
But they're not reading it that way.
Okay, so how can they not?
Clarification.
So I guess the word easement then is what's causing an issue?
I think so.
So
Easement is an ownership.
Right, so what
Who's, who's it creating an issue for? What, who's the
The DRB lot road frontage minimum is 200 feet
Right.
on all zones, okay?
But my question is, who, is it the Development Review Board that's
Yeah, apparently
The Development, the Development Review Board approved a subdivision where one lot was carved out, and that lot had 200 feet of frontage. But it also carved out a 50-foot wide panhandle going to the lot behind the lot that was created.
So which is frontage, 57 feet of road frontage.
For an easement.
No, road frontage.
Yeah, it's a panhandle on the lot, on the remaining lands.
So, dumb it down, let me hear. So it's basically just a, it's a driveway.
It's a driveway. It's a 50-foot utility and driveway.
So they don't own the land on the right and they don't own the land on the left. They just own this
They just own this 57-foot wide panhandle going back to the lot.
That is the road frontage of that lot.
What they should have done was, they should have done a right-of-way.
Correct, right, right, right. That's what I'm, I say easement, I meant right-of-way to that lot.
On the other hand, I
Which, which is, no, it's both their
Yeah.
Yeah, but on the other hand, I understand the motivation of the property owner, whether you want to allow it or not. But I understand the motivation there that they want actual ownership of the driveway
Because right-of-ways are
to their lot that they're retaining. They're selling the, the one on the road. They're retaining the one behind. They want to retain ownership and control
Of their driveway.
Of their driveway. And that's really what this, the issue Of their driveway, and that's really what this, the issue was.
Well, the real issue is.
So somebody bought?
The real issue is, there's already a twenty five foot right of way to the lot that's behind this other lot they just created. So you've got a twenty five foot right of way, now you. Now you've got this other driveway that's gonna be in this fifty seven feet. And you've got another driveway to the adjacent lot that butts right up against that one.
So how many, so how much is, how much land is with the first one that they sold?
Two acres.
Yeah.
Well, then they're gonna, they wanna bust it all up and put a bunch of house in there, based on what I'm, what they're doing. Who owns it?
Who owns what?
The property.
Bought and brought and?
Broten.
Broten. Um, so what you do is you insert a clause in there that, you know, uh, just stated, you know. Odd shaped panhandles, you know, extensions, et cetera, are directly prohibited under the bylaw, and that. Closes the language.
I, I don't see, I can't see where there's confusion here. Two hundred feet of road frontage for a lot is two hundred feet minimum. Fifty uh, easement or a right of way does not, is not of confusion to me. I can't see it.
Yeah, unfortunately, I was not here when they considered. So I really don't know what the deliberative session was like.
I, I.
Because really now, they have this property that if you didn't do it that way, it would end up being kinda landlocked unless.
That's correct, unless you do a right of way or an easement.
Yeah.
So.
But now it's a moot point, right? Because they got this panhandle there.
Well, it's, it's a recipe for the town to get sued because they allowed something. That shouldn't have been allowed, because it's, in my eyes, it's plain as. Black and white. And I just assume guarantee you. That they were never told that there's a twenty five foot right of way that's on there, and the other adjacent lot, that was the only access to theirs. So you've got three places, three accesses for three different people.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Right, within this fifty seven feet.
But like I said, tighten the language up, you know, just mention that the creation of, you know. Perduances or panhandles or, you know, et cetera, et cetera.
But now it's too late because we gave permit, everything is all up and gone.
Lots should be of, you know.
So.
Of compact size and.
So where would we put that this was an error on the part of the. Town, or whoever, whatever department it would be, so that someone couldn't say, hey, you gave Jimmy.
Well, that's why you, that's why you insert, that's why you.
And then, because that's what I would do, like, if I wanted to do that same property, I would say, hey, but you did it for Mark, so why can't I do it?
That's why you change.
And discriminate against me.
That's why you change the language in the bylaw.
Well.
That's why you tighten that language up and make it explicit that it's prohibited.
Well, I guess.
But here's the thing, I understand what Howard's saying, here's the thing. Did somebody on the DRB not understand that, or have that information?
Well, you know, the way the deliberations work, I have seen boards talk themselves into and out of, and into and out of. Approvals, decisions, you know, because you've got five people arguing over what the meaning of the word is is.
Yeah, and there you go, so.
But if you amend the language.
Well, how much?
Tighten it up.
How do you tighten it up any more than plain?
You just pro- directly and explicitly prohibit the creation of panhandles.
So I'm gonna just play stupid on this, if I was on DRB and you told me we can't have panhandles, and I'm thinking, okay, what the hell's a panhandle? I'm, I'm Florida, I'm like, so I don't, do we need to put exactly what that means? You cannot have.
You know.
The more wording you make.
But there's also chances to.
More confusion there.
Yeah, well, you know, what you, basically, what you do is you, you explicitly state that lots shall be of regular and compact size.
And clearly show whatever, whatever that road frontage is, Howard, I mean, it's basic, it is.
I mean, basically, you can only either have two hundred foot of your own road frontage, or.
Or more.
Or more, yeah, or a right of way.
Yep, and that's it.
That's it.
That's it.
That's what should be stated then.
That's what it is.
So, it's the word, that whole easement thing. All right, explain to me what easement, like.
It's a right of way.
Yeah, and easement is a right of way.
An easement is a right of way, so a right of way and easement are the exact same thing?
No. A right of way is a specific kind of easement.
Okay.
Alright, you can have easements for wells.
A power, power line to go over.
Yeah, you know.
Oh, like they have the right to, okay, okay, I got it.
You know, whereas a right of way is a geographically defined area that you're allowing use. Um, but yeah, out west, this gets wild and woolly. You can own a piece of land and not own the minerals under it, the oil under it, the water that flows over it, or even the grass.
Because cream, unless it's like a utility, easements would. No one should really have easement rights, right, and.
Well, I might need an easement to get across your property so I could access my property up back. With, with a water line, because I get my water up back.
Like on my property, there's a.
Oh, so that well, Shirley's, Shirley's well that has been hooked up in since Dean Wilson with the line firming. But she used to, when she was a good shape boy, if she saw us down there, she'd.
And, and sometimes, uh, geographically defining the location of an easement really doesn't. Serve the purpose of, you know, um, perhaps, you know, you have water rights, well, you have water rights in this section of this lot. But where specifically depends entirely on where you drill and hit water. Um, so a specific definition, in this location, you can drill a well, doesn't make sense. On the other hand, driveways are forever, well, you know what I mean?
Well, yeah.
You know, I mean, it, it's permanent installation.
Well, you say that, but there was a lost. Lawsuit where a guy had. The right of way to get to his lot up across another guy's property. But he never maintained it for like twenty five, thirty years, well, trees had grown up through the right of way, of course. Well, the landowner said, you can't cut my trees. You didn't maintain your right of way, so now you're out of luck. So they went to court. I'm not sure, I can't. It was around and around the Mulberry Bush last I knew it.
So lovely, because we have a right of way on the property that, out back, that we can get to from down by Bullock's. Up through there to come that way, that's how we take the logs or whatever trees down. So we just gotta make sure that stays accessible.
Yeah, you gotta maintain it to keep your.
But the, 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 so in this particular case that you're talking about, this was a right of way that we're talking about.
Broten?
Yeah.
No, no, it, it's a panhandle off of the lot.
No, 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 I understand that, but my point is.
It should have been.
Should have been, it should be a right of way.
Yeah, they should have included the panhandle in the lot that was created on the road. Rather than separating it off.
Correct.
And retaining it.
Gotcha.
So my next question with that is. It was all done in one meeting.
It was all done in one meeting?
So. How did that happen? Because it's always been done, you come in with a preliminary sketch.
It's minor subdivision. You can, you can do minor subdivisions in a single hearing.
Right, I guess you can, if you choose to call it that, but we never did. And they seem to bend the, bent the rules. For this one particular deal, for some unknown reason.
Well, it's not like anybody knew the applicant.
Oh, yes, they did.
Who did? Who on the, who on the board knew the applicant?
The chairman of the board.
And?
Yeah, very good friend for them.
Okay.
And you've got a Realtor on there. Now, God, I hope she has no fingerprints on any of this sale. In any shape or form. Because that was the big push, because they had a pending sale.
All in the house.
Yep. God, I hope, God, I can cross my finger.
Well, that's what I'm thinking, like, she'd be the one there to push.
And she brought up the same argument that you just did, nobody likes to have an easement.
Oh, yeah, I mean, that, that would be the only reason why a property owner would, would lay a subdivision out that way, is they wanna maintain.
Sure.
Control of the drive.
I mean, there's always issues when you have a. Unless you have a regular contract, but.
I agree with Howard, I don't see any. Wording issues there, I really don't. I understand what you're saying, that panhandle thing.
You know.
That's not even, that's not even a panhandle, it's a right of way.
You know, that, and that's what I'm saying, tighten it up, you know.
So the only thing we can do.
Explicitly prohibit. You know, any road frontage of less than specified at two hundred feet.
Five oh two point one, general requirements of subdivision. J, lot should be of ordinary shape and compact layout unless compelling public interest or site feature can be identified that dictates otherwise.
Well, there's your insertion right there. You know.
It's here.
Access, access considerations are not. A special, you know.
Well, I had a, um. I don't wanna say engineer, survey engineer. All but wanna come across the desk and choke me because he never put pins on every corner. And literally, the lot, the road was here, and he was going here, 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 up like this, over like that.
And he didn't wanna set pins in all those corners?
He did not.
You're supposed to have a monument at every, every time that thing changes direction.
On every corner, and, and that's in here. And I, I said. It's not on your list, well, I didn't put him in. Okay, so I vote that, make a motion that we don't approve until we want him to put in. He was not happy.
But did he go put him in?
I don't know if he did or didn't, but they went in on the map.
But that's what we're talking about.
Yeah.
So basically, if we put in the clause that says.
That cover, and I'm not saying do it because the language is insufficient or whatever. What I'm saying is, you insert the clause to cover you from the accusation that.
Well.
You know, well, you did it for somebody else, you know, well, that was before. The bylaw was amended. You know, you, you don't get to reach back to before and say, well, you're treating me different, well, that's because the bylaw's different. So we can treat you different.
Well, somewhere in here, used to be the whole idea of the. Spaghetti lots, and that was the whole issue of why we went to two hundred feet is to not have the spaghetti lots.
Oh, the ten acre, uh, get in under the exemption for septic stuff.
Nope, the two hundred, the two hundred feet was put in there, and it specifically said somewhere in here, I remember reading it, it's been so long. That we purposely did that to stop spaghetti lots from happening, and so on and so forth. I remember reading that.
Yeah, the, the ten acre exemption though is gone now.
Right. But it still makes the same, same thing, is to keep houses from being stacked on top of each other. Same with when we had the thirty five foot. Lot line set back. Which now is twenty five.
All right, so we can't do anything about that property, but then. So going forward, do we make a motion to change that now, or?
Well, we've gotta go through hearing process.
You gotta go through hearing.
So when we do the flood relief thing.
You also, you add that to it.
We need to be thinking about doing something to that part.
Or do something to do with a clarification of the whole.
And then you hand the package, and then you hand the package off to the select board.
So that should be put on the agenda for next meeting too, along with.
Yep.
So we'll put on the agenda for August meeting to revisit the. Road frontage?
Five oh three?
Well, five oh two is general requirement for.
Yeah, five oh two.
Uh, plats.
Yeah, I say you modify both sections.
So three oh two in, five oh two?
Yeah, do them both.
So on next month, and then.
And that, that puts an exclamation point on it.
So five oh two and three oh two, what?
Uh, sections, five oh two and three oh two of the unified development bylaw.
For possible updates.
That's a good way to put it, for updates.
For updates. Because we're not gonna just review it, we're gonna update it.
That's right.
We'll make a motion, we'll send.
We're not, and essentially, we're not taking anything out of that.
No.
No, you're adding to.
Yeah, so if we just say update, then.
Correct.
And reviewing digital maps next time too, right?
Hopefully.
Hopefully.
Digital maps.
Although, uh, I'll bring, uh, the model language in for you guys to review, if the map, even if the maps aren't handy yet. You'll wanna, you'll wanna do the comparison, make sure that nothing weird is inserted in there. But, um, generally, these things, FEMA does a good job on these model bylaws. They've been at this a long time.
So. If a subdivision that's been.
I mean, if you want to, you can, you could eliminate the whole minor subdivision provision. And have it all go back to a three hearing process.
Oh, two. Two hearing.
Oh, yeah, you could waive one, you didn't have to come in for a sketch plan.
Nope. We always went by two, just so everybody had a chance to get it in their head. But it says, I forgot about this part. All existing and proposed right of way lines, widths of roads, typical road profiles and dimensions of all lot lines, size of all lots, locations of all buildings, walkways and amenities, utilities and others. Improvements shall be on the plaque. And I'm almost positive when I see that plaque that's down in the basement, um, in the town clerk's office, does not show that twenty five foot right of way for Mr. Muffet. And that's what's supposed to be filed, so.
The problem is, you are out of the forty five day appeal period.
Yeah, but that plaque is supposed to be within six months, brought to the town clerk, or, or the whole thing's null and void.
Oh, yeah, yeah, they've got a hundred and eighty days to file a Mylar.
So if the Mylar is not correct.
It was approved by the DRB, I think you're on really shaky legal ground.
Maybe.
You know, I, I think the, at that point, the only duty of the applicant is to deliver a Mylar within a hundred and eighty days. And it, you know, it goes directly to the town clerk, there is no review function, is what I'm saying. There's no re, after that approval, and after they put their stamp on it in a hundred and eighty days, bring us a Mylar. Unless someone appeals within the forty five days. And someone with standing, not just anybody can appeal.
Okay.
But somebody with standing has to appeal within forty five days. If that doesn't happen, there is no further review process. Now, that doesn't mean you haven't created legal liabilities on that twenty five foot right of way, just because it's not on a filed Mylar. just because it's not on a filed Mylar. You know, if that twenty five foot right of way is described somewhere else, either in deed language or in a previously filed plat, they're still liable for that twenty five foot right of way. The new plat does nothing to take that away.
Right, but.
That takes agreements of the affected property owners to make that right of way disappear.
So on the whole thing of pushing this through in one meeting, it creates another issue is now we've got three access points for three different lots. And now Jimmy and you are supposed to go and get a driveway permit for that new lot that they've created when he comes.
Yeah, he needs to get, yeah.
Now it become, now do we call that a road, private road? So now that kicks it up to a different level of site distance and all that stuff.
How many, how many lots are you saying are accessing off of uh?
That fifty seven feet?
That fifty seven feet?
Three.
That does make it a private road, doesn't it?
And it's more than two. And Mr. Keach's, Robbie Keach's access was questionable. When that was done, people were complaining about it.
Well, understandably.
Well, yeah. So you're supposed to be going out with Jim or the road foreman or, and site, cause one person can't do it by himself. So.
Yeah, we can go out and take a look at it.
No, it's, it's gonna come up.
Yeah. You know, I've gone out with him before.
Two minutes gonna go right where the access system road is that they used to go up.
Right off of, right off.
Yeah, cause you have Robbie's driveway and it's right beside it, yep. So that's a blind.
Yeah.
Robbie's is a blind driveway coming out of there.
You know, it just keeps building, stacking up more and more stuff that I just never should have happened.
So we added those to the minutes for next week or the next month?
Yep.
Yep.
We still have to approve the minutes on May fifteenth.
You weren't here, so you can't vote.
Yeah.
So can't do that either.
We'll have to table them and go next month. Yep.
Keep track of all that stuff.
One night we'll be all here and we'll be.
Put it all through. We have six months worth of minutes to approve tonight.
I know, I didn't even do my phone and hopefully come back. Usually that's where I read my minutes, they don't show up here, so. I know that's right. So, did I make a motion to adjourn?
Take it.
I'll go in favor.
Of course, a huge problem is the state has taken pounds completely. Out of enforcement of rights of ways, easements, covenants. State courts have said thou shalt not have the power to enforce a private property contract.